All right, we'll call the Ms. Mont's meeting to order with a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Owens?
Here.
Mayor Protem Selby?
Betty, I'm here.
Commissioner Borland?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Mann is traveling today and he noted that he will probably arrive late and will note for the clerk at the time of his arrival.
Okay.
Commissioner Stetson?
Here.
Commissioner Wixstrom?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Can we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt the agendas presented.
Can we have a second? Motion on circular adoption of agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, no, I say no. Melissa, it's all yours.
Yes, sir. Item 3A on the agenda tonight is introduction of a new employee and I will let Chief Haskett take it from here.
Good evening. How are you?
Chief.
This is one of our new team members, this is our new investigator, Tommy Corbin. Can you hold up my hand so you can see my face with these masks?
Oh, I think I forget who you are. It's great to be here. It's a beautiful place to be. We've really adapted really good to the community. We got here Thanksgiving Day and everybody's thriving in my household. My son's doing well in school. My wife is, she works in the business office at College of the Albemarle. I probably said that with some mountaineers there. I come from the Western Mountains. I come, I'm about 45 minutes from Murphy, North Carolina. So, about 10 hours away.
Man, you're in Murphy.
Yep. I've seen both sides, I can say that.
I have too.
But I love the beach, I love the water, I love to fish and it was just a good fit and I'm glad to be here and part of this team. I have 21 years of experience in law enforcement. My specialty back home was fraud investigations and background investigations, but I've worked about every kind of case you could think of. So, I'm well-versed and well-experienced and if you need anything, don't hesitate to call me. But I'm happy to be here, thank you.
Welcome, Borland.
I met your wonderful wife the other, on her first day, by coincidence.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, she was so delightful and she said that God actually answered a prayer for housing for you guys.
All right, let's move on.
He's got it, oh, well, welcome.
Melissa?
Yes, sir. Item 3B on the agenda is department head reports.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
In January, while I attended an after-action meeting for the New Year's Eve event, attended the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council meeting, myself and Lieutenant Brad Euler attended an online meeting with Motorola reference the new CAD-FLEX system that will be going online after July. Lieutenant Euler instructed radar operator training at Nag's Head PD. He also attended introduction to internal affairs investigations at the College of the Albemarle in Barco. Investigator Moore attended interview and interrogation training at the North Carolina Justice Academy in Salemburg. And Officer Grogan attended radar operator training at the Nag's Head Police Department. We had four accidents in January, 35 citations. We had eight investigations, six have been closed, two are still open and active for the month of January. Many PD had 1,799 self-initiated calls, 106 dispatched, with a total of 1,905 calls for January. And that is about all I have. Y'all have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Michelle, I'm your program manager. This is a little bit quick this month for January. Speaking of the Downtown Associate Community Program, which you guys are all familiar with, we only have a few more months and we will become a Main Street. So, the core team has been really busy and had a very good meeting, are super excited about all the neat ideas that came out with. They totally were thinking outside the box and we'll have more of those to share with you later. But the Board of Commissioners will be required to adopt the Economic Development Implementation Plan, that's a lot of words. Just so you guys know, the thing that we've been talking about the last couple of months, and you guys will be required to adopt this plan prior to becoming a Main Street, so you'll be seeing this soon. Right now, it's still in its draft form and they're completing it now. But super excited about it. At the same time, we completed the last required staff training for the downtown program and that was on promotion. It was a really great training and we are starting to sign up the core team now for trainings to kind of join in and learn too. So, that's super exciting and there, we have one board member that's going to be attending the actual North Carolina Main Street Conference with me next month, which is wonderful. And we started to try and help with some educational awareness about the DAC, doing a Making Our Way to Main Street weekly social media post on Monday. I don't know if you've seen them, but we're hoping that they're a little helpful. We just take a little bit at a time because it can be overwhelming, the program, so we just take a little bit, a little snippet each week and just kind of share those. And then, we have been working with the various groups in the town who are doing third-party events and trying to work a lot more closely with them to help improve communication and planning and organization of those events. And that's been going really well. And it's actually a really good way to kind of connect us even closer to and the community. So, that's been a really great thing that we're working on. That's it.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good afternoon from the waterfront. On the Maritime Museum side, we just finished up re-varnishing and painting our little Optimus boats, those are the boats that the little kids were, sail in. And with the warm weather this week, some of the volunteers, we've been out doing some repair works on our floating docks. Looks like it's going to be a pretty decent summer. We've had, yesterday I actually signed up 10 kids for sailing, signed up four today. We already have 25 kids on the books for sailing so far. And on the Marina side, it looks like we're actually going to have a pretty good summer based on bookings so far too. We've got two groups coming in, one coming in the end of July, one coming in mid-August on that side. This past month, we had four boats visit the Marina for about two grand in revenue. Everybody's still staying around three nights, so that's good. And we had two cancellations due to weather and mechanical issues. So, things are going well down the waterfront. Any questions? Thanks.
Good evening, Josh O'Brien, Water and Sew Department. Starting with the service installations, operations and billing snapshot numbers show for the month of January that, well, it shows a lot, doesn't it? Doesn't show a lot as well. It shows for meter reading, we read both monthly and quarterly. Percent for rereads for our monthly meters was at 1.5 percent out of the total meters. And when I talk about percentage of reading, I talk about our AMR, Automatic Meter Reading Software, where we drive by and the communication between the radios and the meters and our device. So, 1.5 percent of those readings we were issued to go back out and reread. Quarterly rereads, the percentage on those was about 3.5 percent, which also makes sense considering those meters are only read quarterly. So, there's a little bit, you know, more issue on that, but again, it's below 5 percent, which is great. So, down here at the bottom for connections inspections shows two. We've been averaging about two to three new connection inspections per month for a new construction. The wastewater treatment plant in January, we completed our biannual sludge hall, removing 278,000 gallons of stabilized sludge. Top picture shows staff inside the tank doing our routine cleaning and maintenance at the completion of the hall. All the debris that find themselves wrapped up on the aerators in the middle of the tank, greasing motors and such is completed at that time as well. Also, in January, we replaced at the wastewater treatment plant, five bearings for oxidation ditch, which you can see in the bottom picture, also completed in, it's kind of hard to show in the picture, but down here, these bases are all bearing blocks that we had fabricated. The old bearing blocks were original to the plant and I don't know if all the Commissioners know, but we do, you know, we're coming up on 30 years for the plant. So, there's all good, good work done. Hopefully, we can get another 30 years out of those bases, but five new bearings, new flex coupling in there in the middle. And again, those are all bearings which power our spinning disc aerators that provide oxygen to our microorganisms up there that do our treatment. So, those are the real workers in wastewater treatment, are all the bugs, as we call them. So, that was a lot of good work for the month of January. And on the water side, we received our drinking water system compliance inspection from Public Water Supply, from the Department of Environmental Quality, from the Washington Regional Office. We are found to meet all applicable regulatory requirements. That's all I have for the month of January, if there are any questions.
Josh, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
When you clean the sludge out, is the plant shut down or how do you go through all that?
Good question. We don't have to shut anything down to do that. We do have another tank that we can use as part of that process. That tank receives all of our waste sludge, as we call it, so it's the excess sludge that's removed from the process from settling as the clear water goes on. So, this is kind of a parallel process going on through the wasting, but, you know, through the hall process, we have to get rid of it. So, we are still able to waste sludge through that process, thankfully. Not as much, but we still are. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, mine's Carl Woody from the IT Department. So, first I want to talk about with the cybersecurity training. The topic was two FA bots, that's two-factor authentication bots. And interesting is, I came an article that came out yesterday that says fraudsters are using bots to drain cryptocurrency accounts. And this article talks about a person that lost $100,000 by using these, or by these bots. The biggest thing is, you know, cybersecurity specialists are seeing two-factor bots that circumvent a victim's multi-factor authentication and targeting their bank accounts, trading platforms, crypto wallets and social media. So, this video basically talked about a person receives a call and it says, "Your account has been compromised, please provide me with your two-factor authentication to verify who you are." And people are going, "Oh, let me go to my two-factor," and putting the code in, and then that allows them to log into their account and if it's a bank account, it gets drained, it's a crypto account, it gets trained. This video talked about a Twitter account, able to go in and post, you know, incorrect things on their Twitter account. So, the biggest thing is if you receive a phone call or a text asking for such information, such as a two-factor authentication or an OTP, which is a one-time password, never provide it. Always call or always reach out to that company to verify. So, the last bullet there was, because SMS-based one-time passwords are easy for hackers to circumvent, two-factor authentication using an app-based code generator should be used whenever possible. Basically, I have an app on my phone that every 30 seconds, a new code is populated. So, it's, they don't have time to use that same code over the next hour, it's every 30 seconds. So, it's, just increases the security. So, it's a very interesting topic, so. Other things that happened in the technology part, I attended the Winter Code Conference for Building Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing and Fire. Very interesting and this is a new topic for me. Good stuff. We also upgraded the Laserfish to a cloud-based solution. So, basically, our old version allowed us to only have three people connecting to it at one time. We moved to a cloud-based solution, we can have up to 100 people connect, plus it's saved off-site and secure, so if we do have a big storm that comes through, you know, our documents are off-site, so. Plus, you know, allows us for 100 people to connect, so. And Laserfish has a lot of automation tools and so forth, so we can start looking at different things and different ways to use this Laserfish software.
Woody, can you explain to the Board what we use Laserfish for currently?
Okay. Right now, we use it to, as an archival platform. So, all of our minutes, all of our planning documents and everything are all saved into that and they're saved out in the cloud. So, anything, it's basically an archival piece of software that we're using. But Laserfish has a lot of different options where you can do automation, where, as an example, a timesheet, you know, everything's done paper-wise, you can do automation, somebody fills it in, sends it to the next person, it gets approved, and there's just a lot of automation things you can do with it. And the cost is about the same. So, we didn't increase the cost, I think it's like $100 or something like that, so it's very low cost above the original cost, but it's working good so far. The last, we converted the police SOP to an online searchable solution. So, we basically took the police SOP, organized it with new tabs and new sections so that a police officer can log into it securely, they're the only ones that can get to it. They can search if they have a question about a particular incident or a particular policy that may be in there, they can quickly pull that information up, review it and go from there, so. I mean, that's done by, I can't remember the company's name off the top of my head. Munichode, Munichode, so it's through Munichode, which is what we do all of our ordinances and everything through, so. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Carl.
Good evening. Frankie Willie, Public Work Director. We began first of the year by prepping for the New Year's Eve event, which we assembled a new stage, placed barricades and vehicles in designated areas and set up fire pits. And then, along with our general operations, we finished removing decorations, Christmas decorations within the town. We removed the pile on front of Edwards Boat Landing ramp. With the System of the Ward Department, we unclogged the culvert on Agona Extended and helped the IT Department fix the camera at Queen Elizabeth and Fernando. Thank you.
Frankie, were you responsible for the rocks?
The whole department was, yes, it's a team.
Yeah, okay, well, I felt so limited. I don't know how many Commissioners have noticed it, but the rocks before were little marble chips and they were all over the streets everywhere. So, Frankie's going there and put bigger rocks, they're cleaner, they're big, they don't move, they'll stay there and they really look good.
Thank you, thank you.
Commas, you and your staff.
Thank you. Team effort, thank you.
And for the Planning Department, I want to point out, this was actually a picture that Frankie had submitted, but it didn't fit on his slide, but I took the picture, so we got Woody to put it on my slide. This first picture is before Water and Sewer and Public Works worked together to clear a culvert on Agona Street. I met Frankie and Robbie out there and Robbie is not often the first person to volunteer to get dirty, but he jumped right in to try and figure out what was happening on Agona Street that day. And so, I quickly snapped a picture of him and he was, he was working pretty hard, so it's, it was a fun moment that day. And then, the other picture that I have here is a sneak peek of the furnishings for the Davis Lot. You all may have noticed that today, the contractor has deployed and things are going to start happening pretty quickly there. So, we already have the furnishings stored over at the Public Works Yard, so that's the sneak peek of the really dense wood of the furniture that we'll have on the Davis Lot. So, recently, I met with the engineer, that was February the 3rd regarding the West Side Stormwater Project. We reviewed their preliminary modeling and have come up with a short list of things that we're going to do to move forward before we bring that to you all for review by the Board. Additionally, for the West Side Stormwater, one of the issues that we have seen is that one of the ditches that comes from Ananias Dare to Cartwright Park and then the ditch that everything outfalls into along Sir Walter Raleigh Street, those are located mostly in unincorporated Dare County. So, Tuesday, no, Monday, Monday, I met with Dare Soil and Water Staff and walked that system with them so that they can see the need to have those ditches cleaned out and they are actually going to prepare a grant application in order to get some funds to do that. So, I'm working closely in conjunction with them to support that, which I think will be helpful as well. The Comprehensive Plan Leadership Group met on February the 8th and we will be holding our next public meeting, which will have draft documents for the public to review on March the 14th. And it will be here and it'll be in open house format from 4:00 to 7:00. And all are encouraged to attend. And we are working on Town Common Phase Two with the engineer and the contractor. I was in contact with the contractor yesterday and they are eager to get started. So, that is the update for me, from the Planning Department. Oh, and one more thing, I'm sorry. I did receive an email from the contractor working on the Shalabag Bay Pump Station today. They are anticipating that they will have some weather impacting their work later in the week and I did authorize them to work on Saturday, but they are not to begin before 8 o'clock in the morning. That's really all for me now.
Hey, Melissa. On the comprehensive plan update, I know there's been some concerns from the team there that maybe it needs a little bit more time, maybe another meeting or two, and I just want to, I want to make sure those concerns are addressed. And if more meetings are needed from that group, then, then great. If we decide not, then that's great. I just think there's a lot at stake with that plan. I feel like for two years, it's been, "Oh, well, we're going to address this in the comprehensive plan," and it's, it's a lot and it does have a date to it too, so I want to make sure that we get out in front of those concerns. And I'm sure you've heard from those folks or know you probably well.
And, well, I did this afternoon and I have been in touch with Stuart, with Jay, and he suggested that in order to be able to move forward, maybe we all convene. Well, I've checked with the clerk, that requires a 48-hour notice, so you'll see an email from me since you're on that leadership group about maybe, maybe meeting next week and then we could work together to redline the documents and send them to them. There is, I was, I had a concern that there wasn't enough time before that public meeting. Jay assured me that there was, so we could go through it together and note our concerns. The good thing is, is they have, they have been able to, when I have just written on maps and my comments and sent it back to them, they do this all the time, so they, they're pretty hip to, you know, transcribing and interpreting what those things are. So, I think that we could do that pretty easily. So, I've requested that they send me the most updated documents so that at least we're not reviewing things that we've already told them that need to change. So, once I get those, I will send them back around and ask for the ability to schedule a meeting between us. They, they may not be able to participate, the important thing is, is that we gather and then send them our notes.
Perfect.
Okay. Melissa?
Yes, sir. So.
Is that all Department head?
Yes, sir. And the next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
I'll be talking for a group as well, if you don't mind. Good afternoon, Board members. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm really excited with all these projects going on downtown, especially for the heart of downtown. If you guys look, we have the Shalabag Bay Pumpout Station, the Town Commons and of course, the Davis Lot. I'm not sure if we're able in the contract already to allow something that allows the cars to be at another location where these contractors are actually carpooling in other people. What I mean is, with each contractor, you're normally looking at four to five pickup trucks, that is being straight downtown in front of the work site. We already have some parking that has already been cut off because of the Shalabag Bay Pumpout Station. And then, on top of that, then you have four or five pickup trucks that are outside of that. With the Davis Lot as well, I could see more contractors being on the streets. Then also, you have the Davis Lot as well, or the Town Commons. And I know that's going to go on for a project as well. Is there any way that we could get with these contractors and have them be willing to drop off the rest of the trucks that are not needed over at our satellite parking over at Festival Park? So, then that way, it might free up some of the spaces that are going to be used for the contractors. Because I know on a common job site, you do have four or five extra trucks where people have to be back and forth. However, you also have the workers that are also working and if they could also be maybe at the satellite parking. The other issue that I am bringing up is about Salt Meadows Landing. And I know it is not on this agenda and it will be for the next meeting. However, I do ask the Board to please look at the ratio and the bonuses because in that meeting, it was very confusing, not only for myself, for the applicant and also for the Board. Because the bonus, it's worded interesting and it's a difference between 40 units to 43 units. As well, with the traffic study not being done first without the permit, I don't think it gives very due diligence to go ahead and supply the permit without having the traffic stop first. And that's all I have, everyone. I appreciate all your time and effort and if you wouldn't mind, please looking into the traffic restraints and the parking that might be created due to these three wonderful projects going on that I am fully excited that is going to go on. However, I could see a problem going through the heart of the season and especially the pumpout station lasting until August if we have a multiple of the contractors and the workers taking up the parking for our businesses and our other areas. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, for the next item on the agenda, which is, oh, actually, it's new business five, a government access.
Wait a minute, Melissa, you're getting a little ahead of yourself. We've got closed public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did, I did want to speak, it was a little time.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, come on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to get my name and some information out to everyone here tonight. My name's Katie Hassler. I work for the Dare County Health Department, specifically Health and Education Outreach under Roxanna Ballinger, also a member of the Saving Lives Task Force. Sorry to kind of end the meeting on a downer note, but I do want to talk about the fentanyl overdose crisis that we do have going on in Dare County, but I am here to provide some hope and some resources. My coworker Dave Edmonds and I have started a new program under the Health Department called Recovery and Overdose Services. We're both trained and certified peer support specialists and we are able to respond to the community members who are either struggling with substance use disorder, have survived an overdose, or are family and friends of people who have not survived an overdose, who need connection to services in Dare County. We also run recovery and support groups or who just need some help. It is, you know, a sobering, when you look at the numbers of what's going on, it is sobering and we really want to try and help and respond. And so, we are just now getting our name out there. We have a lot of harm reduction tools. I didn't bring my naloxone and I did also want to speak with the, with the law enforcement officers, but we have met with Chief Webster and Chief Harris, we're working with them in order to help them respond to these overdoses by providing them more than just, you know, writing the report, leaving them with some information, connecting them with one of us who can maybe help them, connect them to other resources, take them to meetings. We're also going into the detention center to. to meetings. We're also going into the detention center to bring meetings and information to them, but for the most part, we're just really trying to help stop the problem and be part of the solution in any way we can. So we do have plenty of naloxone at the Health Department. I do believe everybody should have naloxone in their house, in their cars. I have some information I can leave. It's got business cards with my name and my partner's name, Dave Edmonds. We have a dedicated email address and dedicated confidential cellphone numbers for anyone who would like to reach out to us and ask for help. I would love for all the law enforcement officers in Dare County to reach out to us and use us as a resource. Haven't been able to touch base with Manio PD yet, but that's next on our list. We are getting some training through EMS next week for them to be able to send us the information of people in our county who have overdosed. So I have some information to leave here, and just wanted to get our name and get it out there, what we're doing, and thank you, thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you for coming, and you got your work cut out for you.
Yes, sir.
But fentanyl's a real killer, and appreciate you coming and being a part of Manio and Dare County. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Melissa?
And if you want to, I will take that packet, and I will connect you with our police chief and lieutenant.
Yep. Thank you. These are just some packets, and then this one in particular has our business card.
Okay, great.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Question is, did they get to you before they die?
That's what we're hoping.
That's it, because fentanyl's a real killer. All right, Melissa, anything else? Anyone else come for the board? All right, Ms. Temple, come on.
My name's Dave Temple. I live at 815 Lindsay Lane in Manio, and I saw tonight that you're looking for, starting to search for a town manager, and there's a saying that says, "You can't see the tree for the forests," and I think the tree is sitting right in front of you, and that's Melissa. I think that she is an excellent person. She knows Manio government, she knows the history of Manio, and on top of that, she knows the future of how Manio wants to go. And I would really strongly suggest that you may currate the permanent town manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Would anybody else like to be heard? All right, one more time, would anybody else like to be heard? All right, now we'll close public comment. Okay, Melissa?
Okay, item number 5A under New Business. I see that Commissioner Mann has not joined us yet. He is your liaison to the Government Education Access Channel, but in the packet you have been provided with a draft budget, and the first page is an explanation of what the business is before you tonight. Annually, you all are required to adopt this budget as all the other towns who participate in the Government Education Channel are as well. So that would be the matter before you this evening.
Was Eddie chairman of this committee, or was he just...
He's the board liaison. I do not believe that he chairs the committee. No, sir.
Okay. I was wondering, because if, it's kind of touchy, if he was chair, or he was head of the committee, we might need to wait. Can we afford to wait another? We can't afford to wait. Well, we have the majority here. We couldn't let one person hold it up, and I'm sure Eddie's all right with it. If not, he'll let you know, Michelle. So I'm going to suggest to the board that we move on with it.
Yes, sir. Is the standard same as last year? It has not changed.
Okay. We're going to have a motion, don't we?
Yeah. I'll move to approve the 2022-23 budget for the operation of government education. Can you hear me, Carl?
Yeah.
Second.
Is a second. There's a motion and a second that we approve the Education Access Channel 2022 Budget 23. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I seem to have it. Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, I am going to defer to the town attorney to walk you all through this.
Thank you, Melissa. We've talked about this a little bit before, but the reason why there's a huge paragraph related to this is because it depends on what you want to talk about. If you want to talk about individual people, we need to go into closed session to talk about individual people and their qualifications and things like that. But if you want to talk about a process, about, like, if someone wanted to say, "We're going to go, are we going to hire a search firm? Are we going to do this or that? Are we going to hire from within?" but not talk about individual people, then that's an open session discussion. So that's why the paragraph mentions that it could go into closed session. If somebody'd like to do that, I'd be glad to guide y'all in a motion to do that, but if it's a discussion that's not involving individuals but just about process, then you wouldn't need that.
All right.
I might talk about individual.
Okay, so what you'd want to do is make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A6 to discuss personnel matters, and NCGS dot, or 143-318-11A3 to consult with the town attorney for attorney privileged matters.
Yes, I'll make a motion and do all that you said.
All right, there's a motion to floor to go into closed session. Is there a second?
I'm going to second that.
You second, Sheriff. Motion is second. They would go into closed session to discuss, I'm not going to say personnel matters, but county manager situation, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, we have a motion to come out of closed session. Somebody make a motion.
Make a motion to exit closed session?
Second. Motion is second, come out of closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We're now out of the closed session. Do we have a motion to go back into session?
Yes, sir.
All right, now we're back into regular session. Ben, you want to discuss what happened in there?
Well, the easy discussion is that the board considered the town manager, considered personnel, and considered folks who might have qualifications for the town manager.
Okay. You've heard of the town manager, what happened in the closed session? All right, we're now in open session. Any discussion?
Do we make a motion or not?
Do we need any help articulating what we...
I think if someone had someone in particular in mind, I could articulate a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Melissa with a little bit of help from the town attorney.
At the current salary that she has as an interim manager.
Yes, sir.
And the same benefits as the prior manager.
So moved.
Second.
No, no. Is there a second? Did you make a motion?
I did.
Jason made the motion. He seconded the motion.
I seconded the motion.
All right, there is a motion, a second to the motion that we hire Melissa Dixon as the new town manager for town in Manio, with the stipulations that the salary remain what she's getting now, and that, would you put a terms that's under the agreement that we've already signed for the past manager? What would you say?
Just for the benefit, whatever benefits that the past manager got.
Okay, yeah. All right, that's the motion anyhow. And there is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Now you really are in charge.
And does that start as of now?
As of right now.
All right, here we go. Ruth Jean, comment? Anything you want to talk about?
I just want to congratulate Sarah Lynn Phillips, our Manio High School senior that has joined our Dare Days Subcommittee to help plan our three-day Dare Day event. So I'm really excited about that. I'm looking forward to other youth from our community that will join some of our committees. I also want to remind everybody that we have a food pantry here in the town of Manio at Mount Olivet, UMC Downtown, open Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. So come as you need. You are welcome.
All right. Betty?
Nothing correct. Congratulations, Melissa.
Dell?
Can we look into what Tim was talking about, the contract parking downtown? Can we just look at it and see?
Sure, those contracts are signed. I would also note that, you know, today, when we were meeting to start the Davis Lot, we were, a number of the contractors went back to their vehicles a number of times for tools and such, so that is by design why we do these projects when we do it. So sometimes, having their vehicles nearby is an important thing, but I will talk to each of them and, of course, the project engineer, project managers, to see if we can't work through something that alleviates some of the parking tensions downtown.
Thanks.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing about the parking. I think it's a great point, but it's a little more complicated, you know, having done a lot of construction. You're right, and it's, it doesn't always make sense, but even if we can have that conversation and encourage them, you know, if somebody's going to be on a machine all day, and they don't need to be going back and forth, or leaving and coming back or something, then maybe somebody parking there makes a big difference. So if we can, you know, like I said, maybe it's just as easy as encouraging them. But otherwise, congratulations.
Thank you.
And then COA is looking good. It's exciting to see all these projects, and it's, I'm excited as it's all cleared out, and it's, it looks good. So, that's it.
Is that it?
Sure. Sure?
Oh, I have something, yes. I don't know if this is just a suggestion or an idea, but I thought I would throw it out there, and that is the possibility of having commissioner workshops that we schedule sort of regularly, so whatever it would be, quarterly or whatever, just for an hour or so, like, for example, maybe before the 6:30 meeting or something. But I think it's important to explore topics that are relevant to our work and our important decision-making. So a workshop would be a time for us to do a deep dive into a particular topic to help us gain information and understanding and knowledge, sort of as a group. And I think it's a benefit for us to do it together. I mean, we might be able to go off on our own and do our own research, but I do think it's a benefit for us to do it as a group so that we can hear the diverse views about something, ask questions, and we can learn from each other while we're doing that. So it wouldn't be, it's truly, my suggestion would be a workshop, and not a time to take action or any motions, but really just information. And so I was thinking to myself, what things would I like to know more about, you know, and like to hear about what others have to say? So there were things like, what emerging legislation is there out there on the state level that will impact us, and what can we do about it ahead of time? What kind of talking can we do about that? You know, with the changes in our flood zones, I would love to have a workshop with KAMA or the Army Corps of Engineers. There's another one, and that's the Department of Transportation. We talk about them all the time, and I hear things like, "They don't have any money. They never call back." But I really would like to see someone from the Department of Transportation and sort of hear what the process is and what we might be able to do. Now, maybe that's a crazy one, but I'm just throwing it out there. Another one would be, you know, to learn more about the state's grants for sustainable energy. We've talked about that, and I know there's doable things that we can look at. I'd love to be able to do that with our group. Anyway, I have a whole bunch of things like that on my list, but I thought it would help us be prepared to answer citizen questions. It would help us be informed and then also aware of what's coming, because things are changing, you know, our environment is changing, and when you look at those maps of what we're going to look like in 25, 50 years, it's like, what can we do ahead of time and think about it? Anyway, that's my suggestion. I don't know if anybody else is interested or not.
Thank you, Sheriff. Eddie?
Congratulations, Miss Manager.
Thank you.
I know you're going to do a great job, but that's it. I've done this great. Happy to be here.
Yeah, congratulations, Melissa. Well deserved, and I know you're going to do a good job.
Thank you.
I want to just piggyback on what Jason said about the building downtown Manio. It's the dead of the winter now, and what we're going to get done, we need done now. Time is money with contractors and what have you. For people's retired, it's pretty easy to call the shots when you're not working and not getting the job done. I know it's a problem. It's going to be a problem, because I see it already with the surge treatment workers down there. But Melissa, you're going to have your job, hands full with the job, talking to the contractors. But right now is the only time they can get it done, and like I say, time is money, and if we ask them to park half mile, quarter mile away, they got to walk to the trucks, get back, get it done, because workers need trucks to get the job done. It is going to be a mess. I know it's a problem, but it ain't going to be easy. So we need to know what we're talking about when we tell the contractors, park truck over on Ice Plant Hot. I don't know what's going to be worked out. You'll have to do something, but it's going to be a mess.
Yes, sir.
To get these projects completed by the first of the summer, which I understand that the surge plant won't be complete till August.
That's correct. But I am encouraged today with them asking that they could work on Saturday, if they can, if they can take advantage of their pretty days right now when, you know, our visitors are not downtown. It indicates to me that they are moving forward as swiftly as possible.
Okay, congratulations again. Is anything come for the board? All right, withstand adjourn till when? Jamie?
March 2nd at 6:30.
All right, March the 2nd at 6:30.
You want a motion? You want a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We stand adjourned.